It's usually late until this part kind of like, yeah, and then you can close YouTube. YouTube if you want to be closed. It's usually late until this part totally, yeah, and then you can close YouTube. You can give a second. And then.
It's the first time this has happened.
The attendees list to make sure that Gail and the audience. Yeah, so go to. I think we're okay. I'm not exactly sure what we're seeing through the next screen.
Look at you, the view. And yeah, because on speaker, but gallery.
Hey, I'd like to call to order the place the planning commission meeting on Tuesday, October eighteenth. We do have a forum. We do.
I'm I'm seeing a UFO. What's going on?
I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda. So. Move in second page. All those in favor? That carries. Do you want to make your quick announcement?
Yeah, sure. I just want to take the opportunity to kick off the meeting to introduce Sarah Bart. These are just joined the economic development as a permit tech. And Sarah comes to us with a, let's see, degree in planning from Udo Tacoma. And has worked in the private sector for a consulting firm to permit coordination on the private sector side of the fence. And then also has worked at a, for a zoning compliance company and decided to. She's seen it from the other side. So she's joined us to work at our front counter. And she'll be also supporting the planning commission and as well as the rest of the planning work within the department. So I just want to welcome Sarah and introduce you her to the planning commission. And she will also provide regular support to the planning commission look forward to.
Welcome, Sarah. Alrighty, we will now move on to public comments.
So at this point, if there's anybody in the public that wants to speak, you can do that through the raise hand function of the Zoom webinar. It looks like we did have one person here at city hall as well. So not seeing anybody in attendance virtually, but if there is, you can use your raise hand function and we'll bring you in. I don't see anybody.
And did you want to make any? Okay, welcome. Alrighty, commission member reports. Eddie, anything? Your report. Gail, do you have anything to report?
No, my arm is still broken. I can't drive. How's that?
Feel free to introduce yourself to Sarah. Gail.
Hello, Sarah. I really am a person who goes to the meetings. I'm just virtual at the moment.
Welcome, Sarah. No report. And I have no report. I'm Dave Lawson. My chair. Our second chair is Gail. Alrighty, director's report.
I do have a couple of items. I can't remember the last meeting if you mentioned that the mayor is making a recommendation to fill the two vacant seats. And that will occur on November third. And so that's we're looking forward to that. So I think I reported out that the last meeting. And then also I just want to make sure the county commission is aware that on Thursday night, the city manager will be making this budget presentation to the to the city council. This is the formal budget presentation. If you've watched in the past, it's where he'll spend about an hour or so going through all the historical and existing revenues and and expenses. And also what they're projecting for the coming year and how they're going to meet those expenses with program enhancements, whether from staff resources to programs and and then also present the balanced budget. One thing that's good to note that currently in the proposed budget for the community economic development department is a few positions. One, I'll be focusing on housing coordination. And one focusing on climate action versus coordination as well. So that's one of the, especially the climate action coordinator position is one was identified through the Thurston County or Thurston, Thurston Regional Action Plan. And and also the local adoption of that climate, that litigation plan. So.
Is that housing coordination regarding development and building of houses or does it have to do with homeless?
It's going to have pretty much the full range. It's it's a position that we will vision be looking at the housing action plan that was adopted by the council on the recommendation of the planning commission about a year and a half ago. And looking at implementing that those housing action plans, so that can be anywhere from looking for, you know, public and private partnerships, facilitating or troubleshooting of, you know, full market rate housing, housing varieties, but also looking at coordinate with the regional housing council and other jurisdictions on building up the supply of low income housing as well as supportive housing too. So it's going to run the full gamut. There is going to be a position that's going to be proposed to be added in the city manager's office. That's going to be a position that's going to be focusing on CTPG fund implementation and probably direct social services. So that would also play a part in homeless response services. So I wouldn't say that this housing position in our department would be hundred percent homeless, but it'll be, there'd be a tie there and coordination between those two positions for the homeless response. And that's all I have. Any other questions?
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. We are lucky to have our favorite water resource engineer here, Doug Christensen. I have to go over the draft amendments to the Lacey Municipal Court, fourteen point two nine and fourteen point three six. Doug's also known by me as Mr. H two O.
Alrighty. Well, thank you. Alright, so I have two chapters of the LMC to be updated. And these updates are driven both directly and indirectly by the current Western Washington Phase Two municipal stormwater permit. This is the third iteration of the permit. And it's valid from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty four. And during each of these permit terms, they ramp up requirements. So there are some new requirements. It's partly what's driving this LMC update. And the other thing is our new twenty twenty two City Lacey Stormwater Design Manual, which you worked on with me over the past year and was adopted in June, went into effect on the first of July. So this is now in effect for for virtually every project in Lacey. And that's the other thing driving these updates because there's new definitions and and some tweaks that we worked into the stormwater manual. And now some of the updates that I'm bringing to you in these two chapters of LMC are for consistency between the two. The fourteen twenty nine illicit discharges. That's that's largely about preventing anything but stormwater from getting into the storm drainage system and causing downstream pollution. And in the in the permit, one of the, one of the new sections in there has to do with the requirement for us to establish a source control program for existing like commercial and industrial sites in town. And what that means is source control means controlling pollution at the source. So when rain falls, it can pick up pollutants from the site and carry them out into the storm system and and on downstream. So part of what we're required to do under the current permit is to develop an ordinance that addresses that and requires businesses to implement source control on their site. If they have, you know, like they have leaky oil barrels that are draining out into the street, for example, that kind of thing would be addressed by this. So chapter fourteen twenty nine illicit discharges is where that resides. And we had the wording, we had wording in there already that was that mostly addressed this, but there's some definitions we had to add and some wording that had to be tweaked a little bit to really make it fit the requirements. So that's what's going on with fourteen twenty nine illicit discharges. Fourteen thirty six is wellhead protection and critical aquifer recharge areas. That one's being updated largely for consistency with our manual, which includes new sections having to do with underground injection control wells, UIC wells. They've they've been in there all along. And Ecology has a UIC program that they established back in about two thousand and six. And that carries through and we've incorporated Ecology's UIC program more completely into our twenty twenty two stormwater design manual. And along with that, there's the, there's what's known as deep UIC wells, which are the ones that penetrate the till layer to inject stormwater at depth because they can't infiltrate near the surface due to soil conditions. So that whole section that was added would have potential conflicts with our aquifer protection and critical aquifer recharge areas code language. So the adjustments in the code there are in part to address that and make everything consistent and have the definitions that are applicable. So in fourteen twenty nine illicit discharges, the main revisions are to the definitions to section fourteen twenty nine oh seven zero, which is the source control requirements. So that we're consistent with that new program that were required under the permit. And fourteen twenty nine one hundred, which is enforcement. Because we're required, the permit requires us to have the ordinance to apply source control, to have an inventory of of applicable properties in the city that it would apply to and an inspection program and an enforcement capability for sites that were out of compliance. We already had enforcement wording in there, but it's been revised just a little bit. I don't know if you had a chance to to look through this or not, or how much detail we're going to get into with this. But basically, the Ecology's permit requires progressive enforcement. So we start with education and trying to get voluntary compliance. And if sites comply, great, we work with them to achieve the goal. But if if they resist and and aren't cooperating with what's what we're requiring them to do to control pollutants leaving their site, then there's progressive enforcement. Right? So it starts out nice and gentle and then you're ratted it up and you start assessing fines if necessary. We prefer not to do that, but if necessary, the wording is in there. In fourteen thirteen and critical aquifer recharge area, the main revisions are the the definitions, in fact, several definitions were added and others were revised to be consistent with the permit and our manual. Fourteen thirty six point one one zero, which is critical aquifer recharge area uses and activities. There were some wording changes in there. And fourteen thirty six one seven zero, which is wellhead protection area standards for new uses. That's where the the biggest changes were in those sections.
Do you want to go into a little bit more detail, Doug, about specifically? Because the planning commission has had problems with their iPads and so I don't, I don't think they've seen a lot of this until right now. So what Doug is talking about is in our wellhead protection areas, I'm not sure if the planning commission is aware. We have essentially time of travel zones around our wellheads and maybe what those are and how basically those uses are more restrictive the closer you get to a wellhead.
We've gone over that before.
I couldn't remember if you had or not, so.
Particularly because it came up during the Meridian campus.
We have this map in our stormwater design manual. And it's also in the the Water System Comprehensive Plan, which is being updated. I don't know if it's finished being updated, but it's close to it. So these are the time of travel zones by color. So you've got, I don't know if you can see that. Probably pretty small for that.
You two men.
You gotta put the paper up there.
Red, then orange, then yellow, then green, red being six month, orange is one year time of travel, yellow is five year, and then green is ten year time of travel for say, for say a contaminant or a spill to migrate to where the wellhead is.
And so the amendments themselves, there's, there's a couple ones that I just wanted to point out. The planning commission was aware of them and we, our staff has reviewed this and is comfortable with with, you know, the direction of this, but just want to make the planning commission aware that before we had gas stations, where gas stations have never been allowed within the one year time of travel. So it got a little bit more specific through the 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 regulations. The regulations are, the proposed updates would say that retail gas stations and non-retail fueling stations. So it would be your, you know, essentially your gas station type use, also your non-retail. So I'm assuming that would be like fleet, you know, filling of vehicles and those kinds of things. But then also mobile onsite fueling as well. So we also have some users that do onsite fueling of heavy trucks and equipment, stuff like that. That would be prohibited as well.
Yeah, there are services now that do, come and do onsite fueling. And it it essentially bypasses the controls we have in place at fueling stations, which require to have a canopy over them and and they isolate the pads so that if there's a spill, it's contained, it goes to an oil water separator and a shut off valve and all this stuff. Well, mobile fueling, you don't have any of that. You have somebody in a truck that goes around and, you know, adds fuel. So the the potential for spills is much higher. And it's it's kind of an emerging threat is is how we see it in the water resource field. Is that it's, it's hard to control. It's not really, we're not really regulating it right now. So that's why we put the wording in here for, added the wording for mobile onsite fueling.
So, so let's just say they're clearing a bunch of land and they're using these big heavy equipment. They're always coming in to.
Yeah.
They don't remove those to get fuel.
Right, yes.
So how is this addressing that?
Well, that's, that's, that is a form of mobile fueling. But the wording was added because of the threat on paved surfaces. On a construction site, they have a, we have controls in place for various aspects of pollution prevention. In fact, they do what's called a SWIP, Pollution Prevention, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And spill control is is part of what they do on construction sites.
They also have onsite inspection and people collaborate. But where this phenomenon came up was with the expansion of the industrial area with logistics and warehousing, all the semi tractors coming in and delivering. There's not a, you type of fuel service up in that area either. So part of the change in kind of market is that you have these companies will hire these fueling companies that come down with a truck driver with fuel truck and go in and fill up the the trucks at the warehouse locations as opposed to have an onsite fueling area for those trucks. Because a lot of these trucks are independent or they just don't have the capacity to put the fueling station in. So that's the issue that Doug is referring to in the mobile feeling. It became a phenomenon over the last, what, three years or four years we started becoming aware of it. And those sites aren't protected from any type of potential spill.
So where where is this in the?
This wording is in section fourteen thirty six point one seven zero, wellhead protection area standards for new uses. And it's in the section A, which is about uses that are prohibited within the designated one year time of travel zone. So that's a fairly tight one of these circles. You know, depending on the the type of soils or whatnot, but in the one year time of travel zone.
So also included in that is a little bit more expansion on the the definition of dry cleaning. Specifically, some some solvents that aren't allowed gives a little bit more specificity, I guess, to that.
Exactly.
That section about before it had dry cleaning facilities. And it didn't really mention the the solvents and now it specifically says what's not allowed associated with that. But you could do, I guess, other kind of dry cleaning as long as it didn't include those solvents, right?
Those are the solvents of concern that we know about. I should mention that this, a lot of this, the wording in fourteen thirty six was something that Julie Rector, our water quality analyst, was working on. And in fact, the summer of twenty twenty one, we enlisted Jessica Brandt, who was our, one of our planners at that time. And she was going to help Julie and I with this more than a year ago. But then Jessica left the city and then Julie retired. So and then I was working on the stormwater manual update. Otherwise, this would have been before you a year ago. But with with both of them leaving and then it kind of just hung unattended. And then I got the stormwater manual through and that's why the timing is now to get the code update to match.
And then moving on to the the next one on the list is the the deep underground injection wells, which Doug has already previously mentioned, so outright prohibiting them in that one year time of travel zone because of the, you know, the direct connection between the the stormwater that those wells are injecting right into the aquifer that's being, you know, utilized by a well that's in that close proximity. So the idea with that is that, you know, if the the wells may be allowed outside of aquifer recharge areas because there's a greater or less of a chance of contaminating a well the farther that underground injection well is from from the place that the water is getting sucked out of the ground.
Right.
From the source.
How many injection wells can we have in city?
If you.
If I have a definition, right?
Depends on whether you mean how many sites have them or how many actual wells there are. The difference between the two is ginormous.
What is the most, what's the most beneficial information to tell us?
Well, we have, there are three site, three main sites that have deep UIC wells. They're all up in Hawks Prairie and they're all these large warehouse sites. And for each one, it's not just a few wells, it's an array of wells because they're large sites with with large roof and a large amount of pavement. So there's a huge amount of impervious area that's all draining to these wells. And the wells are, you know, limited in size. They're actually pretty big. But they're limited in size and capacity. They're filled with materials. So they, it's not just like pouring water down a bathtub drain. It's 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 a little slower than that. So there's, there's.
And these are being corrugated things you see them put underneath the pavement?
You're thinking of the arch detention systems? Is that what you're thinking of? Probably.
Just trying to vision. This is literally a well that goes down.
This is a vertical frame. This is a vertical injection of stormwater at depth.
With the site design, you'll have the normal treatment, you know, the type of treatment, some retention, slow it down. And then you'll have the discharge instead of infiltrating because they have a high confining layer. There's not a lot of distance. So you got to break through that confinement letter before the infiltration portion. And that's just basically drilling a hole, filling it up with some material, and then the water works its way down through the confinement letters into the deeper.
And this is important because we have two fairly significant wells at Hawk, over there.
Yep.
Like all of our source wells are important. The city's growing and our supply really isn't.
And and those facilities are currently installed. They do have, you know, again, treatment and and redundancies to so if there is a spill onsite, there's these redundancy plans. But still, even with those redundancy plans, we want to make sure that there is further distance away from our respective well supplies.
Yeah.
To do that type of stormwater management.
So it's not a preferred approach, but it's an approach that was taken by these sites because they had no other way to manage their stormwater. And so in our updated stormwater manual, we've added quite a bit of wording to address that and provide a path for approval. But that path to approval ensures or attempts to ensure that our source wells are protected as much as, as much as we reasonably can.
Then I was also going to mention, if you go further down, it does say that on a case by case basis that you could potentially have an underground injection well within a five year time of travel zone. So it does allow for that, I guess. Would there be certain criteria that you guys, I mean, what would be the decision making on that to allow that on a case by case basis?
Well, the main thing is a, is a pretty fairly extensive hydrogeological analysis that they would do upfront before this, before the plan is approved. And it would involve groundwater monitoring over the course of a year. And and getting a good handle on what the groundwater flow direction is and any potential, you know, if there's any existing contamination subsurface, which can happen sometimes. It's the kind of surprise you don't want, but it can happen. So the manual, like I said, it allows a, an approval path for deep UIC wells if you have no other way to manage stormwater on the site due to geologic conditions. But it's got some safeguards built in. Since all our, all our source water is groundwater.
Does the fact that there is on former landfill, Oxbury, where originally was a landfill, correct?
As far as I know.
For some time.
Was there remediation done so that any water on that facility, that site doesn't migrate? Do they pump water out of, I mean, what do they?
I I'm not intimately familiar with Thurston County's facility.
And I don't recall, you know, where, I'm sure they have a plant for for the closing up and reclamation. I just don't know what the details are. We can find that information and.
I'm just curious. Because it's connected, but but right up against all those warehouses.
Now, what the landfill is, no, but the landfill is down there by the I five corridor. Fortunately, it's pretty fairly far away from many of our production wells. And outside of the five, it might be a portion of a ten year time of travel.
Yeah.
The big well time of travel, maybe.
The ten, it might be within the ten year with the updated information and the and lots groundwater study that there.
But typically those type of sites, when they reclaim them, of course, they'll cover, they'll they'll vent them for the methane. And then they'll also put in perimeter groundwater monitoring wells just to make sure if there's any leaky or anything like that that they pick it up and address it. But I don't, I don't know for sure what their specific.
So short of going through all the changes, that's, that was kind of a summary of of the main changes.
Yeah, so unless the planning commission has any other questions or concerns, well, this will go through our kind of normal, you know, public hearing recommendation process. You know, this would also be an opportunity for the planning commission. If you had any, you know, certain folks you'd like us to reach out to, to get any feedback on. In my opinion, the the fourteen twenty nine changes that are fairly minor and almost like housekeeping, the ones that are a little bit more involved are the fourteen thirty six wellhead protection standards. You know, we do have some potential impacts to development as a result of of these. I think, you know, it's maybe warranted that we reach out to some development folks and. I think, you know, it's maybe warranted that we reach out to some development folks and, and I know Doug has done some reaching out to. At least our internal like development review and, and those kinds of folks to get some feedback, but. At this point, if there was anybody that you wanted us to reach out to, we could definitely do that.
Um, I have a question going back to the mobile fueling thing. That's in the, the one year time of travel zone, you said, right?
That, yeah, it's in the section that is referring to prohibited.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just wondering, like, I know you were talking about it starting to become more of a, more of a threat. How big of a change is this gonna be for those businesses? Are they? Are there some that are currently doing this that are now gonna be prohibited from doing it? And is that gonna be? Are, are they gonna be someone that's going to? Not like this?
I. I don't know. I don't know who's doing it and who isn't, really.
Okay.
We, we've talked a little bit about it as staff. It's been hard for us to kind of grapple with from an enforcement standpoint. Because, um, you know, these are companies that are bringing in a fueling truck and it could be even as small as like a pickup truck. And are doing, you know, fueling onsite. And so, you know, we're not able to see who's coming and going. I think for, from our perspective. It's if, if something was to happen, um, if we got a complaint or if we got a spill, then we would have something that would. Cover the city that says, no, that was not allowed there. You weren't permitted to do that. Um, and allow us to then use the enforcement procedures through this to, to act. Um, I think, you know, we could probably still do that without this, but, um, I think it just cements a little bit more kind of the enforcement part of, part of this. If we were, you know, in the likely scenario, something was to happen.
So this isn't something where, you know, some huge, one of the huge warehouse companies or something hasn't like changed their. Operational procedures where they're bringing in tanker every day and all of a sudden we're gonna say, no, you can't do that anymore, which. Maybe a. You know, may affect their, their business plan or whatever, and, and there, there may be some. That's what I was trying to figure out, if there's something.
There always could be, I think there's some one year time of travel that covers at least half of one of our large industrial sites, the Hawks Prairie well location.
The other ones that are close to our well twenty nine.
And what, you know, one of the things we should do is, is, you know, get notice out to those facilities, cause as Ryan said. Said, it's very difficult to find out who the contractors are because they're, they're very mobile. And, but we can at least reach out to those, uh, facilities and just make sure that their site managers are aware of those standards and, uh. Um, if they have any questions, they can contact us before more information of what the proper steps or protocols would be.
The, the truck facility that's going in, uh, Little Lament and Marvin?
Yep.
Uh, well, they'll have some fueling, sure.
Uh, they will, but they won't be within a one year. They're on the, um, be teched equipment, so at the corner of, uh. Britain and Marvin Road. I believe they may have some onsite fuel source for, for just their services, but they wouldn't have an active fuel system. Um, but I believe they're not in the one year time of travel of Betty Will. Sorry, but I, I have to look for now.
These bigger outfits, you know, that have people that come in and do fueling with, you know. A larger tanker truck perhaps, or however they do it, um. Are probably set up with spill equipment and. It's probably less of a concern than the, the smaller operator that might be doing this or. What we've heard, which I haven't actually witnessed though, is that there's services that'll come around and fill your car while you're at work, for example. And that sort of thing. So if that was within a, a ten year time of travel, that could be a concern, cause they may or may not. Be, you know. Professionals, they may, they may not have spill kits with them or anything like that.
But it's not.
We don't know.
But it's, it'll be strictly prohibited, right? Whether they have. That.
In the, in the ten year zone, yeah. In the zone close to our wells.
So technically, I mean, going back to that, I mean, I was thinking about mobile, they would have a mobile fueling service. They'd have their own tanks. And they'd be subject to the existing standards of our well protection, once about location. If they're in a one year time of travel, you wouldn't, I think they are, but also design and installation of those tanks, they'd have those double redundancies and alarm systems for leak protection.
So I guess going circling back, then one of the things you were asking about was like, who we should. Public outreach, I, I would think would be all of those large facilities out there in Hawks Prairie, right? Or if they're in the one year, whatever, one year time of travel or.
Yeah.
Do you, um. Any more to add? The next step here is, this is, is gonna be a. A planning commission is just gonna sit with us to do a public hearing?
Yep, just to be with you, do a public hearing and ultimately hearing public information testimony, official staff presentation, and then the recommendation council.
And give a timeframe then, when that may be occurring?
Probably be looking at like December at this point, um, November's, well, I'll have to look at schedules, but November's taken up with.
Will be, be December, cause November eight, the second meeting in December's, or November is going to be, that was your form.
Right. So, yeah, we'll be looking at December and then it'll get to council probably shortly after the first of the year.
After, yeah. Right? Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Right, and we do.
See, it's always nice to have a paper backup.
Thank you, Rick. We're gonna move on to old business homelessness initiatives and regional housing council, uh, council structure, Rick.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Rick?
Oh, I was, reliable paper backup is always important.
I was teasing you.
Rick, are you ready? Do you want to share screen and all that?
You go with that. I'm gonna talk first about the homeless response, and then I'll talk about the, uh, regional housing council government structure, so. Me, so, you know, I think there was some questions or curiosity about what's been happening with some of the conversations about. What we call the, the right away initiative, and that's the effort by the state of Washington to look at the, um. Encampments within the, uh, state right of ways. This is across the state, but, you know, for us specifically in Thurston County through Olympia, Lacey and Tomwater. Um, the encampments that are currently in those right of ways and relocating the, those individuals to, um, shelters or housing or, uh, supportive services. A lot of impetus for this was the governor said that, you know, this is inherently an unsafe situation. As well as, um, uh, just trying to get to services. So they had a, a, the state initiative, which includes. Where the governor directed Department, the Washington State Department of Commerce, uh, Washington State Patrol. And Washington State Department of Transportation start working with local jurisdictions to develop a plan and strategy. And, uh, so as we started interacting with them and the local partnership is the Thurston County, City of Tomwater, City of Olympia and City of Lacey. And then part of that's the same group of forms that are regional housing council. Started working with the state agencies to develop a plan and strategy. And of course, with their, the state's initial timeframes. Uh, wasn't quite realistic because as we all know and have been experiencing with the, uh, trying to respond to homelessness is we do not have. Shelter or permanent supported housing resources to be able to meet the number of individuals that are currently. Um, homeless in, in the Thurston region. So as we started working with the state, uh, they, the state just, uh. Said that, hey, they can bring some dollars to that, uh, program. And when their initial proposal that went out, um. To not only Thurston, Thurston region, but also King County, Snohomish County and Spokane County, was the four counties that they're really focused on. Um, they had submit your proposals to, uh, provide, um, enough, uh, shelters. And they'll put together funding mechanisms. So in that initial, uh, proposal, we put together the idea of, um. Trying to acquire two local hotels, both of, um, uh, fifty unit tiny village and, um, let's see. Funding gap for the second phase of, uh, unity commons at Martin Way, the twenty twenty eight Martin Way project. And then also the cost for providing outreach and support services on the ground to, uh, transition individuals into these. Uh, appropriate locations and get them connected with services. Um, with that proposal, uh. It was, came to something around forty nine million dollars in the request to the state for Thurston County. Of course, with the funding pot that they had, um, their proportion allocation to Thurston County initially was nineteen million. However, um, Snohomish County did not have, um, projects or programs in place. That they could make a, a, an official ask to the state. So because of, we were actually in a good position with not only our regional partnerships. But also we had several projects already being planned. Uh, one of them being hotel acquisition, that was a partnership between the county and City of Lacey using the, um, uh, federal ARPA dollars. Uh, the, um, City of Olympia is working on, had acquired property at Franz Anderson, and we're looking at potential tiny village. They're also looking at relocating their, uh, downtown encampment to their Plum Street site, um. As a, uh, a tiny village as well. So since we were already had a, a pretty good partnership and coordinated and we have these projects, we were actually get. allocated more than our nineteen million dollar initial offer, so we end up receiving thirty nine millions, uh, dollars from the state. Now, when I say receiving, we haven't fully, um. Put all the contracts together and realize those dollars yet, but we are currently in the process of, um, putting together a. An MOU with Department of Commerce and it's, it's interesting in this, this process, working with so many different entities. We started out with a. Um, basically a high level kind of global MOU. This is the, the two partnerships, the Thurston Regional Partners. Uh, the state agency partners, this is the framework, what we're trying to do and the dollar amount. And then under that umbrella was the individual, individual projects would be contracted specifically with the appropriate local agency, local jurisdiction. So with that nineteen million dollars, uh, as I mentioned, the, um. For initial relief and overnight shelter services, the state has actually reserved. At capacity about twenty five beds at Unity Commons at a cost of, uh, for over three years for three point three million dollars. Uh, they also are providing hotel vouchers for, uh, uh, domestic violence victims. And so this is enhancing existing programs we have locally for those individuals that are now become homeless because of domestic assault. They need a safe place to stay, so the best, you know, opportunity we have is to get them into hotel stabilized. And providing support. So they're going to fund, um, about fifty vouchers at about two hundred thousand dollars for the next, uh, year. And, uh. Then the City of Olympia project, the, uh, uh, tiny village home site on Franz Anderson. The state will be funding capital construction of that, about six point two million dollars. And again, that'll be about fifty tiny homes, uh, into the local area. And then, um, uh, we couldn't get two hotels, but we still have the hotel, one hotel acquisition. The, that will, is about, well, currently the hotel is about a hundred and twenty four rooms. Probably resulting in about a hundred, uh, beds for transitional shelter, enhanced shelter. And, uh, the state is going to fully fund the acquisition of that as well as the initial rehabilitation. And also provide three years of operational funding for that to operate as that enhanced shelter. With the idea that within the next three to five years of the converted permanent supportive housing. And that, um, and so each one of those projects, again, will have a separate contract with the state under that umbrella MOU that we signed. Various jurisdictions signed back in June. Um, so Lacey's role in that is we're currently working with the county in a joint specific MOU on the hotel acquisition. Uh, we're putting together, um, uh, sort of the framework of what that would look like in terms of. The operation and expectation of placement, because one of the concerns that we have locally is, you know, as the priority for these, uh. New shelter and, um, and, um, shelter beds as well as, uh, services. Is for initial priority for those that are in the state right of way. Second priority is, is then do the coordinated entries, local coordinated entry system. Third priority is direct, uh, uh, referrals from, say, the, you know, in our instance, Lacey's, uh, uh, community resource unit and, and outreach team. And then, um, and then for the capacity is available, placement of other individuals. And we want to make sure that, um, those, these, this. These, uh, beds that are coming, would be coming online would be primarily, uh, be serving local, uh, Thurston County. Uh, homeless individuals and not be a location where, you know, if there's capacity needs, you know, not being met up in, say, Spokane, they're not being. Transferred over because there's available bed space. So we're working out the arrangements of how that would function and if there's any. Putting place in these facilities that were not a, uh, from the local area, that there has to be some type of local approval process for that. So those are the type of things we're working out in the MOU with the state. And then eventually we'd have to turn around and enter into a contract with the specific operator for the hotel. Um, that's converted to a, a shelter. And these same conversations are going on with the Olympia contract for the tiny home villages. So again, uh, I know that's a. Very, uh, a lot of, a lot of stuff there and kind of maybe hard to track all the various projects and funding and, and discussions. But one thing I can say is it does demonstrate the value of this, even though there's been some bumpy roads. This regional partnership and the regional housing council, because we're, at, at the staff level, we were talking and coordinating. And when this issue came up, we were able to put together a package that was very well received by the state. As well as take advantage of other county appropriation, because they weren't, didn't have products available. That we were able to use those dollars to get more than what we would have originally received. Um, what, what that, what occurs now is, uh, it provides capacity for other projects with our local dollars and funds to add more. Housing and resource infrastructure to help create a, um. Resources that are, that are needed in, in the, uh, Thurston County area. All, all in all, with this right away initiative, if everything comes and keeps progressing like we expect over the next, um. Six months, uh, we would see about two hundred and twenty four, uh, shelter beds of various levels of, of capacity. Come online to support that. And then, of course, uh, I mentioned with the hotel acquisition, the expectation is that will be. Um, managed in a manner that will not have an impact on the surrounding properties. Uh, that it will be, um, there'll be a community advisory group forum that will help the oversight, uh, and, and communication with the surrounding properties. And then, um, and then can eventually set it up for conversion to permanent supportive housing, which is also. A gap in our stair steps of, of resources for individuals coming out of homelessness. Cause if you have your overnight shelter, your longer term transitional enhanced shelter, permanent support housing, and then eventually into housing. Not everybody can go to the next step, but you need those steps for people to, that can evolve up into getting independent again. Um, those resources, we have definitely a gap in the permanent supportive housing enhanced shelter. Areas of that. So. More to come on that and we'll probably have, uh, more specific information once these agreements are signed. And then, uh, we'll be able to talk about specific locations and, and, uh, and projects.
Seems like a very complex and hard-won coordination. So, um. Kudos to all the people.
Yeah.
It's, it's been a huge.
It, it, it has and it's, it's, it's difficult to try to follow the bouncing ball, you know, as you will.
Yeah.
Because there are, you know, we've been meeting twice, three times a week, uh, the regional housing council, keep them informed. And the, 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 the nice thing about the regional housing council, because they're not directly making decisions on this, because all these projects are jurisdictional specific. But having that platform with the regional housing council and, and helps communicate the community. Like I said, there's been some tough, uh, tough conversations and, and, uh. Trying to make sure we're all on the same page, but with, with this state effort, it's, it's been very nice. Um, overall in terms of how the, how the jurisdiction is coming together.
How? How is this gonna be communicated to? The public hearing, see?
So we've been, we're working on developing a communication, uh, plan. And once we have the MOU, we're gonna start, we're gonna look at probably having a, um, one time the MOU, uh, agree to. We'll look at scheduling a open house forum, uh, targeting tenants of those, those property owners and, and. Businesses in, in, in the general location of the hotel and then the broader community too, to be. And then the broader community to to be able to have informational forum and we'll probably have that sometime in November. November is going to be a busy month for forums and communications.
Is this kind of like, are you envisioning like a bit of a road show kind of thing or?
I think our first step, I think, for instance, we've we've actually had some made some individual contacts with surrounding property or businesses businesses in the area. So that they are aware of this and then we're just waiting for we get all the information and it's that it's a for sure deal before we have the actual public forum. But we have been communicating and then people be aware of what's happening. I don't expect we'd have a traveling road show on this to try to try to capture in one one information night, have it recorded, but kind of have it here so we can use the equipment and then we can also have that as a video recording for people to view.
One, just kind of backing up a little bit question. So this funding that you were talking about that came from the state, was that all from? The right away. Initiative that they're working on or was that was some of that from a more general state response to the housing crisis?
There there is, this is what's kind of complicated because we thought this is all money that would. Fast access, but as it started, it actually comes from three different state pots. That partial dollars are coming from the rapid acquisition fund, which is the fifteen million dollars for acquisition of a hotel site. There's a flexible proviso for homeless services, a quite a bit of other dollars are coming from, which are going for the. The services and outreach. And then there are also some home security funds that the state has that they're using for some of the capital improvements and remodeling of the of the hotel property. So there's three different plots and some really unique, because for instance, rapid acquisition dollars are, these are dollars that are generally managed by housing trust fund and housing, or not the housing trust fund. Yeah, the house trust fund. And they go through the notice of availability and you go through this process. And with this initiative that came out this spring, they had some dollars that were just specifically targeted for these type of projects. And so. We still had to submit a proposal, but it wasn't a statewide competitive proposal. It was a jurisdictional based proposal that they were accepting. Anything else on homeless services? I can touch upon the regional housing council real quick. Would not be able to pull it up or?
I can do it. For some reason, I wouldn't do it on that.
So. I won't go through this, this, there's only five slides. I won't go through them all and and one is kind of fun because it has all colors and it's like a game board of Candy Land or something, but. The. The regional housing council, it's interesting history because it formed out of. There was an old housing and. Human Services Consortium that was also was kind of the funding body that made recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners for funding decisions related to. Various types of funds like the home fund and housing essential needs dollars, all these federal and state funds that come down for either capital development or. Homeless Response Services. As the HHHSC kind of. Dissolved, the regional housing council kind of formed as an ad hoc group. And as over time, the purpose of that was. They wanted the regional housing council to really be that entity that not only had the funding decisions, but also looked at. The long term planning for providing housing and homeless response services, developing the five year homeless response plan and. Coordinating with long term housing implementation plans, those type of things. They want to connect the long range planning and goals with the funding decisions. And so that's kind of the basic premise of their regional housing council. So as it formed and started meeting, it kind of got into more of a formal structure. We entered into interlocal agreement with amongst the partners, which are the, again, the Thurston County, Tomwater, Olympia. And the City of Lacey. And then also there's a representative from the South County communities, which is the representative is the City of Eau. And as we gone forward, you know, given keeping that annual cycle of funding for those various types of projects, whether it be, again, capital or. Direct homeless response services. As that evolved, there was a desire that there wasn't enough. One of the challenges was decisions or recommendations and you also had to kind of constantly go back and forth between the home jurisdiction. And you also have the individual jurisdictions and there's specific projects and there's a lot of positioning, if you will, on how you, you know. How you would require another jurisdictional funds for a project. And so there's a, while we're working it well together, there are all those little bumpy pieces of it. So we had to retreat, the regional housing council had to retreat with the. With the members of the council and and staff. And also some of our service providers from the housing action team as well as other subject matter experts. And out of that retreat, one of the biggestest thing was the need for the regional housing council to become more independent of the home jurisdiction, have its own entity. And with that, its own staff and and then also going eventually from a recommendation to the final decision on a lot of these funding, funding streams. But. That's going to be difficult to do overnight. So you're going to have to transition. So the first step of transition was to. Create a structure that starts working towards that end. So if you can pitch to the next slide. So this is kind of a busy kind of org chart, but this is somewhat what's been presented to the regional housing council. And the regional housing council adopted it. So. Oh, I forgot one other piece that adds to this. With the recent county action to establish the countywide home fund. There's also a need to create a structure for administering those home fund dollars. You also have the City of Olympia that already has their home fund and a home fund advisory committee. But they have pledged to transition their home fund into the countywide fund. Maintain a third of it because they still have active projects that they have already funded. So they got to maintain some of those dollars. So with that. And and with the county establishing the countywide home fund. The model is to have the regional housing council. And then. Underneath that, two advisory boards, one for the housing advisory board, which would, you know, look at any capital project and administer recommendations on application or allocation of the home funds. And then you also have the homeless service advisory board, which would be more focused on homeless response services, case management type funding, those type of things. And setting that structure and now those two advisory boards would be. Staffed by. Housing Action Team members, subject matter experts, a broad variety of individuals that have either perspective or expertise in in. In the committee on those two topics. And then those would make recommendations to the regional housing council, which would still be made up of the elected officials of the of the jurisdictional partners. Plus to housing action team members as non voting and jurisdictional staff as non voting as well. That regional housing council and that whole structure would be supported by our regional housing council executive team. Which is that box in the middle at the top, that would consist of the chair of the RHC, the RHC manager. And the advisory team staff leads and the communication. One thing that will still be maintained is the tech team underneath that, that is the staff lead, the RHC manager and the jurisdictional staff. And currently that tech team is made up of. Three county staff, homeless response coordinator, the housing specialist and the fund administrator. And then it has a staff member from Tomwater, staff member from Olympia and myself as as Lacy. And then eventually that housing coordinator position would probably step into that role if we get that in the budget. So that tech team would coordinate the, you know, the decisions or recommendations coming out of those advisory boards underneath it. It's not necessarily underneath, it's not a. These are, it's not a yes or no, but it's just to make sure that everything's consistent. And moving forward. And then, of course, the both the affordable housing advisory board on the left and the bottom and the homeless service advisory board on the right. Would be supported by the staff leads from the Thurston County. Affordable Housing Manager and the Thurston County Homeless Response Manager. So that's where the regional housing council sits right now. To implement this fully with the structure of the RHC table, we will have to go through update and amend the existing interlocal agreement. That will take some time, but however, we do have funding cycles coming up this November, December. So we are able in an existing interlocal agreement to start forming those advisory boards. And again, as a as a as a kind of parallel or example, the advisory board is going to operate pretty much like the planning commission does to the council. We're going to be not only on policy issues, making recommendations and developing those long term plans. But when the when the funding RFPs go out and all the various service providers submit their requests, they will score and wait those proposals. And then make recommendations for funding as well. So I'll stop there because I know that I just kind of gave a lot and there's a busy drawing up there, but I'll stop right there to see if there's any questions. And this is going to be something that's going to be continued on for quite some time. No, the next slide was a Candyland drawing. I was going to ask Ryan to go to just to highlight, but he.
Oh, I was thought we're, I can, I could certainly put it back up.
Maybe more shoots and ladders and I just kind of hit down the slide. So the next should be the next slide is the, this is the slide presentation I gave to the councils. Make sure that they're aware of what was coming on and what's going to be coming for them. But to the top left, it basically says, this is how the spending cycle will occur. The advisory boards will make priority recommendation criteria, the tech team assures compliance with all state laws. We would look at make sure it's consistent with the plans, pass that on to the RHC, they will set priorities and processes. And then the then the support staff would have developed the RFP. Then again, going down the Board of County Commissioners approve the RFP because right now in the structure, the Board of County Commissioners are still the fiduciary agents, so they have the final say. And then. The county staff would issue the RFP, the advisory boards would then score the apps and that blue circle on the bottom left or not bottom middle left. Moving over to the tech team is again ensures compliance and passes that recommendation on to the RHC for approve the funding recommendation down to the lower left and then moving over to the Board of County Commissioners authorized awards. And then the county staff issues the contracts and then the following in three months reprint, repeat, rinse and wash. So that's the. It's easy as that.
Any questions for Rick? Thank you very much.
And if anybody want to join me in an RHC meeting or or anything else, just let me know and I can.
I think to attend, it sounds very interesting.
We're working on, we've been online and with some of the challenges of Zoom conversations and sometimes there's some very tough topics or or difference of opinions. We're going to try to start pushing these meetings to be in person. That has created some challenges having everybody online and and also we have. You know, what, five or four members of the RHC plus their alternates, that's eight plus all the staff, all of a sudden you have twenty five boxes on a Zoom screen and then. Sometimes create some challenges for conversation.
Communication and announcements. I will mention that I finally attended my first transportation policy board meeting as a business representative. It's very interesting and I'm learning lots. And we talked about the Martin Way, you know, the whole Martin Way process and what's going on there. And obviously a big topic was the regional airport. Is topic. So. I forgot to mention that very important. So interesting. Any other announcements? Our next meeting is November first.
Oh, I have one more announcement.
Okay.
Is it the fifteenth? That's the second meeting in November.
For the November commercial, that's what we're working to at this point, yeah.
Yeah, so just to plan, we should be aware that we're going to, we're planning on holding the for the second planning commission meeting in November, November fifteenth. Hosting a public forum for the out in the northeast area, working on scheduling in St. Louis Middle School to have a community conversation about November commercial designations. So just want to make sure that's under everybody's radar. We're going to look at having in person, but also have opportunity for people to come in as a hybrid with with our. I don't, I don't.
Meeting owls.
Meeting owl, yeah, portable hybrid system, so.
So we're meeting there.
You'll be sitting there so staring right at you the whole time. It makes you uneasy.
It even hoots.
Yeah. Okay, well, our next meeting is November first, so that comes up pretty fast. All of a sudden, it's the first. So thank you for your service and we are adjourned.
Ryan. Ryan, is there some magic code I'm supposed to put into my computer?
Not good. So somehow some update happened where everybody's iPad is asking for a password that nobody knows what it is, including our IS folks.
Okey dokey then.
I will be responding, I'll be coordinating with IS and then I've got everybody's personal email addresses, including yours. So I'll just coordinate that way to get.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.